At this time, we will open up that Garden Grove Housing Authority. Ms. Baylor, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Dalton.
Here.
Commissioner Doe.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Navarez.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor. Vice Chair Broadwater.
Here.
Chair Nguyen.
Okay, at this time, we will have public comments. Would anybody like to speak before the Housing Committee tonight? Hearing none, we will, at this time, close public comment. Any comments from Commissioners? We'll go to consent items.
You have two items, Mr. Chair. It's recommended that they be acted on simultaneously.
Entertain a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, no items for consideration, matters from Commissioners and Director. Hearing none, we will adjourn until, what's a month from now?
October 26. October 26.
October 26. Thank you very much. I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen. Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. We had two closed session items, and there's no reportable action taken. We'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Doe. Can I see, we have some presentations.
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor and I'd like Keith Jones to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Furtal. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council takes great pleasure in recognizing two outstanding members of our community who have been chosen as the 2010 Man and Woman of the Year by the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. Would R.C. Gall and Lee Butterfield please come forward? Every year, the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce recognizes two individuals whose devotion and enthusiasm for the community is demonstrated through their volunteer efforts. The city is privileged to honor these two outstanding people. We'll begin with Man of the Year, R.C. Gall. R.C. Gall has been a Garden Grove resident and community volunteer since moving here with his family in 1963. Several service organizations and groups in our community have benefited from R.C.'s volunteer spirit. He served as President and Treasurer for the Garden Grove Kiwanis Club. He has been on the Board of Directors of the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association for over 20 years, and served as President in the mid-1990s. R.C. is also a current member of the Garden Grove Elks Lodge, number 1952. R.C. has a love for music and is an accomplished piano and trumpet player. He has volunteered countless hours playing big band music with other local residents, until recently retiring from this activity. He now spends much of his spare time with his family, which includes two daughters, three grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. His dedication to his family and the community is a model of service of excellence to all residents in the Garden Grove community. Next is the 2010 Woman of the Year, Lee Butterfield. Lee Butterfield has been volunteering in the city of Garden Grove for most of her adult life. She and her husband Woody raised their five children here, and she started volunteering as a member of the PTA at both Evans Elementary and Lamson Intermediate Schools. Lee served on the City of Garden Grove Planning Commission for 15 years. Because she is such a reliable volunteer, she has been asked to serve on a variety of city committees, including the Clock Tower Construction Committee and the city's 50th anniversary. Lee has been an active volunteer with the Orange County Food Bank for the past six years and volunteers there on a daily basis. In 2008, Lee was recognized for her service by being named the Orange County Food Bank's Orange County Volunteer of the Year. In 2005, she joined Seroptimus International of Garden Grove and was quickly appointed to serve as the Chairman of the Programs Committee. She also served as Secretary for the Seroptimus Board of Directors for one year. Lee is a woman whose generosity and dedication makes her a true asset to our community. R.C. and Lee, at this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to present each of you with a certificate and memento in honor of this important distinction in our community. The City of Garden Grove congratulates you both on this wonderful achievement and thanks you for your many continued years of service to the community.
Mayor Dalton, Councilwoman. Thank you very much for this honor. I appreciate it very much. Most everything I could have said has already been said. However, I am keeping busy. I do miss the Planning Commission, but not so much that I want to come back, although I find this room cozy. And I'll do visit City Hall once in a while, kind of check in on everybody, see who's there and who's not. But this has been an honor, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Dalton. City Council. City staff. I'd like to express my appreciation for the honor of this recognition you're affording me tonight, and I know exactly where I'm going to put these things. I'm very proud of the little credits that I was thinking while he was reading all that. I was thinking, who is this guy? Anyway, thank you very much for your consideration, and I will really think about this as I get older. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now we'll have oral communication for the Council, Agency, and Sanitary District. Peggy Bergen.
Good night.
Good night.
Good evening, staff, Mayor, and Council, and citizens of the city. Basically speaking, I'm here on Consent Item 6A, which has to do with professional services related to the development of mixed-use land designations. That word kind of threw me a little curve, so I looked into it. And my questions are, does this mean that the codes as we now know them will be changed, made more general, and easier for outside contractors to come in and bulldoze through a project for us citizens that we will know nothing about until it's two-thirds through? Because as now, we do have the option of either finding out about something at Planning Commission or at City Council, and at least putting an objection through that we don't like. But if you change the basic designations, and then I kept reading on, let's see, why were there no citizens involved in this? It says, you know, it's going to be developers and construction professionals to increase the likelihood of projects being built. This is who they're going to work through. Well, these people already want the projects to come in, because they don't make money unless a project is built and sold to somebody. They don't make money if they leave one house on a lot. So therefore, they're going to, of course, going to be quite adaptable to make them say that, sure, it's going to fit. And now, the six proposed codes, this is what I got out of some of them. Use 1 was up to eight- or 10-story buildings could be put in willy-nilly whenever the builder figures the code is right, but the code will be changed to make it right. Use 2 is up to three- and four-stories. Use 3 is five- and seven-stories around the civic center area here, where there are no tall buildings at the moment, unless I missed them, five-to-seven stories. Then there's industrial-commercial changes, and there's industrial-residential changes. Among those is industrial-residential, we'll be putting lofts in where there's commercial, which means that'll be more police activity needed at night, because these areas will not be closed at night with no one around. They will have people coming and going to residences. I'm always surprised that it seems we have to pay outside contract people, this is 140,000, which is quite reasonable for studies, I know that, but why does our staff not have the authority, because they deal with these issues all the time, to see what's needed, bring it back to the Council, so that other people can see what's going on, and find out why the changes are needed? You're telling me that the people that set up our city over 50 years ago, they were not wise enough to know that one city lot deserves one city house, as opposed to four lots has 12 houses? The one over on Fairview, there were four houses taken out, and now there's going to be, I believe, it's 20. Now, and then your studies always come back and say, okay, it's not going to impact the traffic, it's not going to impact the schools, it's not going to impact the sewers, it's not going to impact anything. So why are we changing the designations of these things before someone comes with a project? It'll make it that much easier for these projects to go through, and the citizens who live in the adjacent areas to know nothing about them. I find that kind of objectionable, so maybe my take on this, what we had in the basic staff report this time, wasn't fully informative, and maybe I've got the wrong ideas about this, but it seems to me that you guys kind of keep changing everything, so you guys can bring in as many of these builders as you want to come in and make projects next door to where people have been living in single-family houses for years and happy. And then you say, well, we need tax dollars. We wouldn't need tax dollars if we didn't buy property that we have no use for. So basically, that's my take on this one. And while I'm up here at oral communication, I did notice, four days after the last meeting in the paper, three days, it said that Stanton, the registrar, that Stanton is buying a closed school to use as a, you know, community area for meetings, places, and a park. Now, why don't we ever use any of the monies we get in our city to buy some of these things and turn them into useful areas for the citizens? We, as citizens, we have nothing here. Nothing. My sons played grown-up softball for years in orange, because they never could get a field. No matter how early they registered, they couldn't get a field in Garden Grove. So they played in another city and paid all those fees and all those umpire fees, week after week, and we bought the snack food in another city and stopped at the AMPM in another city, because there was no space here. So that's my little take on this article. Why can't we do it if Stanton can?
Thank you. Ty Depp.
Good evening, Mayor Dalton, Councilmember, lady and gentleman. The reason I'm here today because of the safety of the children in public elementary. The school located at the corner of Bixby and Brookhurst in Garden Grove. The children are walking in that area very busy every morning. The driver, as you see in the picture, the driver approached at the corner here, I'm sorry, the driver approached at the corner here, cannot see pedestrians. The reason being, there's a brick wall block their view. Once they see the people crossing the street on a Brookhurst, it's probably too late, very close. Myself, lady and gentleman, I almost hit a person one time in the morning. My opinion is, in order to prevent the accident from happening, I'd like to ask Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Council, see you can replace a portion of the brick wall with a chain-link fence, so driver can see the people when they approach the corner. Or at least, we put up a sign for warning the pedestrian, so everybody knows, oh, they approach the corner, so people would cross in the street. I understand that you are not very busy, that's why you're still here this time, too late. However, please save some time for the safety of children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Schaefer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. My name is Chris Schaefer. I'm the Public Policy Specialist for the Alzheimer's Association, the Orange County Chapter, located here in Irvine. We provide a very wide range of services for people who have been diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease, for their families, loved ones, and all this is done at free of charge. I particularly want to bring to your attention the 24/7 helpline number that we have available for people to call with any concerns that they may have related to Alzheimer's disease or other dementias. That number is 1-800-272-3900. As I mentioned, all of our services are provided free of charge, with the exception of some educational opportunities for professional caregivers, and there is a small charge for that. I would like to invite you to come and join with us in our Fall Memory Walks. These are our largest events of the fall for fundraising. We expect more than 4,000 people, and we hope to raise over $300,000. They will be taking place on Saturday, October 23, at Cal State Fullerton, and the second one on Saturday, November 6, on the Boardwalk in Huntington Beach. We invite you to come and join us and participate. You could even form a team and be real participants in the move to end Alzheimer's disease. You may be surprised to know that Alzheimer's disease was identified more than 100 years ago by a doctor in Switzerland, Alois Alzheimer, thus the name of the disease. And now, it is the sixth-leading cause of death in the United States. There are more than 6 million people currently diagnosed in the United States, and 66,000 of those live right here with us in Orange County. In another 20 years, by 2030, those numbers will double, and for those in the Latino and Asian populations, those numbers are expected to triple. And we can't forget the Baby Boomers, because they are coming now into their most vulnerable years, and we expect that 1 in 6 Baby Boomers will have dementia of some form or another. Right now, one person every 70 seconds is diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease. By 2030, the numbers that I'm referencing will change to 1 every 36 seconds. So as you can see, this is an effort that needs a great deal of attention. We need to wage a war on Alzheimer's disease in this nation. What we need in order to do that is research funding. We found that there is a direct correlation between deaths where there is a low amount of research funding and a reduction in deaths where there is a high amount of research funding. For example, in the six years between 2000 and 2006, deaths attributable to Alzheimer's disease went up 47%. During that time, we received approximately $400 million a year in research money. Deaths due to heart disease, kidney disease, HIV, and several forms of cancer all went down, some as much as 18%. Those are diseases that receive in the area of $6 to $8 billion of research funding. So the direct correlation is there, it's an easy one to see. We are asking the federal government to allocate $2 billion to Alzheimer's disease through the National Institutes of Health, to place a priority on this, and to develop a national plan for Alzheimer's disease. It is a crisis. It affects every aspect of our American life. It doesn't matter whether you're rich or poor, what color you may be, what you do for a living. It crosses all boundaries and knows no limits. It is the long goodbye, and we ask you to join us in our war to fight Alzheimer's disease and our vision of a world without Alzheimer's. Thank you very much. I brought materials for you this evening. I hope that you'll take a chance to look them over and to enjoy the little sweet treats that I brought as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Rod Powell.
Hi, my name is Rod Powell, and first, I would like to thank the previous speakers. They all had important things to say, I felt. I may not have something so important to say, but I'm going to say it anyway. First thing, I want to thank Mayor Dalton, a former mayor, Broadwater, perhaps future mayor, Broadwater, for being here every week. You know, I know that you're not only here every week, but you are here, your heart's in it, and you're paying attention to everything going on throughout the course of the Council meeting. So I appreciate that. What a difference it would have made if Trung Nguyen would have got four votes more. How things would have changed. You're probably aware that our former esteemed Councilmember, now County Supervisor Janet Nguyen, beat Mr. Trung Nguyen by, what, three votes, after a recount with the help of our Councilman Doe. And the payback is Janet Nguyen gets Andrew Doe on our council through her money, her contacts, perhaps even through illegally getting other candidates of my particular race to run and split the Caucasian Bloc vote. So this is what we get. We get somebody, Janet Nguyen, just so, I'm going to make this real clear, I challenge her to come down to this council meeting. She spoke the very next person after me one night here, you may recall. I made it crystal clear that I felt and feel and know Andrew Doe is gaming this city and has been for over two years now. Not being a resident, certainly not as primary residence. Primary residence meaning there is a difference between re-registering your vote to Garden Grove but still living in Santa Ana. You can say, yes, now I actually live in Garden Grove, I've re-registered there. Maybe that passes the muster legally, I don't know, but when you're still sleeping in Santa Ana, it doesn't pass my muster. And so she comes up after me, and she doesn't volunteer anything. I know Andrew lives in Garden Grove. I know he lives here. She didn't stand up for you at all, did she? She didn't stand up at all, nor has anybody else. Nobody from Shannon Street has come down here and said, yeah, I know he lives on my street. Nobody has stood up for you, not a single member of this, not your neighbor, Councilmember Jones, who lives about 20 houses from you, hasn't said one time, I know he lives here, I've been to his house, I know he lives here. So what's the deal? You know? I mean, so that's how I feel about this. And sooner or later, we're all just people, councilmembers. We saw an entire City Council and Mayor get arrested within the last week. An entire City Council and Mayor were arrested, locked up, thrown in jail. So you're just people as I am. You know, if we violate the law, we do what we're not supposed to be doing, we could be in jail tonight. And how did nobody know about that? You know, how do these things go unnoticed? Does nobody pay attention to what's going on? Not anybody in an entire city of 40,000 people took the time to look it up and see that they're paying that kind of money to their Chief of Police and to their councilmembers and the city staff? It's, you know, and then now it's outrageous, and we're all shocked. You know, so that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close oral communication. I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, in all fairness, Rod, you said that nobody's come down here to say that Councilman Doe lives in the neighborhood. Well, nobody's come down here to say that he doesn't live in the neighborhood either. So let's keep a proper perspective if you're going to, you know, make comments, which you have a right to do, and I will allow you the same amount of time as everyone else gets, but, you know, let's keep things more even-sided. One thing, gentlemen, Mr. Depp brought up about Brookhurst and Bixby, maybe we can take a look at that. There's, I go on that intersection probably two or three times a day. I understand what you're saying. If you're talking about taking a section of the block wall out, too, we'll have to check and see if that's feasible, if it belongs to the school district or whatever. But the intersection is terrible based on Pacific Electric right-of-way. It's an offset intersection, and it's really, I don't like it either. I'm hoping that there is something, and we'll look at it and try and see if we can make it a little safer for the young people going to Brookhurst School and for the old people that are crossing the street, too. But thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Can I add something, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
If the wall does belong to the school district, I would propose maybe putting up, like, little handrail around the intersection, the corner, so that at least traffic is stopped before they actually enter the intersection, the crosswalk, you know, like we do at some of the crosswalks? Just a barrier so that at least they come, they slow down before they walk right into oncoming traffic.
Well, one of the, actually, more serious problems is the fact that a lot of people, when they cross that intersection, even kids going to school, they don't push the button. So therefore, when the signal changes, it goes to red sooner, and people are either halfway through the intersection or two-thirds through the intersection, and it's confusing to the cars that are going eastbound on Bixby to want to turn south on Brookhurst, so. But yeah, if you could do that, we can look at that. Let me ask a question. Do we know whether children are actually living on the east side of Brookhurst, going to that Brookhurst School? Oh, yeah, I can tell you that for a fact, yeah. From the apartments on Lamson and Kensington, in that area down there, yes. And they're not busing them? No, most, there are several, there's quite a bit of busing, but there are also several that walk, and their parents walk them, too. Maybe we could make a phone call to the school district and see if we could get that wall just four or five feet cut out of it. Fence could wrap around there. Easy enough. Yeah, we'll look at all avenues. Okay, anybody else want to make any comments? You're welcome. I would like to make a comment, too. Go ahead. Why can't the staff do it? The reason the staff can't do it is we keep our staff cut thin. We don't have people that are expertise, have expertise in every endeavor, and that's why we do have studies, that's why we buy studies and order studies out. Our staff, believe me, if they work for the city of Garden Grove, they've got a full-time job. They work hard, and they're not experts at everything, so every once in a while, we hire an expert to take a look at something and do it. And that's precisely what we're doing in, I don't remember the number of it, but...
that's precisely what we're doing in—I don't remember the number of it, but anyway. There's not—a flow of staff that you say, oh, well, we can get these three guys to do this or anything else. People at City of Garden Grove already have a full calendar, and they work hard. And sometimes, it's just best that we go out and get somebody else to do the job and the expert—expertise.
Okay, now we will recess the council and go to the agency.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development. Ms. Baylor, will you please call roll?
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Doe?
Here.
Member Jones? Vice Chair Nguyen? Oh, Member Jones, sorry.
Here.
Vice Chair Nguyen? Chair Broadwater?
Here. Okay, we've gone through everything. There are no consent items. Let's go to public hearings.
Yeah, before we do that, we'll need to reopen the city council.
We'll reconvene the council at the record show all members are present.
Mayor, before you guys go any further, I'm going to recuse myself just to avoid any appearance of impropriety because I have a business relationship with the applicant.
I think that's a good idea.
We'll have Jim Delalonge give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Good evening, city council and agency members. The item now before you for your consideration is the First Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement with Century Village Group, LLC, for the development of fifty-three townhomes on approximately 2.67 acres of land at the northwest corner of Taft Street and Century Boulevard. In April 2010, the agency initially approved the DDA for the Century Village project. Since then, the developer has received approval for the project entitlements, is in the process of completing the on- and off-site improvement plans, and has secured construction financing. However, due to the current economic climate, the permanent financing has been more difficult to obtain. In order to facilitate obtaining the permanent financing, the developer has requested the agency carry a portion of the purchase price in the form of a personally guaranteed promissory note. This will give the Century Village Group the additional equity needed to facilitate securing permanent project financing. The deal points of the First Amendment are as follows. Number one, the purchase price for the property is to remain at $4,010,000. The developer will deposit $3,010,000 in cash in escrow prior to close. The agency will carry the remaining $1 million for thirty months after close of escrow at five percent interest with up to twelve months in extensions if needed. The note will be paid back via the proceeds from the sale of the units. And Jim Borisic, principal of Brandywine Homes, the parent company of Century Village Group, LLC, has agreed to offer a personal guarantee for the $1 million promissory note. This amendment did not change the purchase price or increase agency costs, so a revised summary report was not prepared. However, because this disposition and development agreement amendment involves the disposition of real property by the redevelopment agency, the legislative body must first approve the amendment by resolution after a public hearing. The public hearing was published in the Garden Grove Journal on September 9, 2010, and September 16, 2010. The previously estimated revenue estimates for the project, $150,000 to $200,000 annually, as well as $4,010,000 in land sale proceeds, remains unchanged. In addition, a modest amount of interest income will be realized over the term of the note and will depend on how fast it is repaid. Staff first recommends that the city council conduct a joint public hearing and adopt a resolution consenting to the approval by the agency of the First Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement, by and between the agency and Century Village Group, LLC. Additionally, staff recommends that the agency adopt a resolution approving the attached First Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement with Century Village Group, LLC, for the development of the 2.67-acre site in the city of Garden Grove within the area known as the Century Triangle, and authorize the director to execute the First Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement and any other pertinent documents required to effectuate the First Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions relating to the project.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Gentlemen.
Move the item.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
That's for the city council resolution.
Also?
One at a time.
Okay, city council, yes.
City council resolution.
Motion received, three yes votes.
And the second motion for the agency resolution.
Okay.
Move the item.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, we have no more items for consideration. Any matters from agency members or director? Hearing none, we will re—we will adjourn until Tuesday, October 12, 2010.
Okay, now we'll recess the council and go to the sanitary district. Okay, consent items.
Recommended that these items be acted on simultaneously.
Move the item.
I have motion.
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, matters from board members? Any comments? Okay, hearing none, and we'll adjourn until the next regular meeting of the sanitary district, Tuesday, October 26, 2010, at 6:30 p.m. in this building. Here. Okay, we'll resume the council and go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, recommended item 6A through 6E be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
I'd like to poll 6B.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Leonard.
Second.
Have motion, second, and a balance. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
I'm not going to participate in 6B for the same reason as the last one.
Okay.
Okay, well. He's not even supposed to be in the room.
Yeah, we'll wait a minute, so. Okay, 6B. The purchase and sale agreement for acquisition of 200-foot easement over real property at 13562 Robin Court cost $1,500.
Move the item.
I have motion.
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, as soon as Councilmember Jones gets here, we'll go to the public hearings. Okay, 7B.
Mr. Mayor, 7B is a public hearing to consider the Garden—City of Garden Grove's 2010 Drinking Water Public Health Goal Report, and Keith Jones is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. In 1974, Congress passed the Safe Drinking Water Act to ensure that municipalities provide safe, clean drinking water. The act sets the mandatory enforceable levels of constituents in water, known as maximum contentment levels. And these—on an annual basis, this report must be communicated to the customers and a water quality report with a public hearing. The City of Garden Grove's water supply continues to be in full compliance with all enforceable standards required by state and federal regulatory agencies. Therefore, it's recommended the city council conduct the public hearing, respond to the public comment on the public health goal report, and secondly, approve the public health goal report as submitted. I'm going to complete my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen?
Move the issue.
Second.
I have motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
7C.
Mr. Mayor, 7C is a public hearing to consider a development agreement with the Olson Company involving twelve homes at Garden Grove Boulevard, and Susan Emery is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. On September 2 this year, the planning commission approved tentative track map TT-17384 for the purpose of improving the site with a small lot subdivision consisting of twelve two-story detached single-family homes, and recommended that the city council approve the accompanying development agreement. Regarding the public testimony, aside from the project representative addressing planning commission in support of the proposal, two persons spoke with concerns, and no one spoke in opposition to the proposed project. The proposed development agreement is part of the proposal to complete the remaining area of the Sycamore Walk residential development located at the southwest corner of Garden Grove Boulevard and West Street. The applicant's approval of the track map is to improve 36,000 square feet with twelve single-family homes in the manner of a small lot subdivision that joins with the existing small lot residential development to the east of this parcel that was developed back in the late 90s. The proposed project will match that of the existing residential development. The site will be finished with landscaping and perimeter walls that will be completed to match that of the existing development. The planning commission recommends that the city council introduce the attached ordinance for first reading regarding development agreement number 182-10. And I'll read into the record an ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove adopting a development agreement between the Olson Company and the City of Garden Grove. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. Peggy Bergen.
Thirty-year resident on a corner about a half a block from this area, so I'm quite familiar with this project. I did a walkthrough when the original Sycamore Walk was opened and up for sale, and basically speaking, they had a very unique way of parking cars because you had two in-garage parking spaces, but your driveway and another house's driveway were crossed each other. So therefore, you couldn't really leave a car of yours out on your driveway because someone else might want to get into their garage. So that is one of my questions, is will this project—will each house have an independent driveway? Because according to the report, there are four parking spaces per unit, and that would mean they'd need to have two in the garage and two on the apron. Well, if the apron is being shared by somebody else, you can't really leave your car there. And there are only five visitor places in for this twelve. Well, I did notice that on the original 48 houses, they had 11 visitor places. So we're talking between 60 units now. We have 17 parking places, which I don't really find that really, really excessive or even really adequate, because most residential houses I have know of now, they have a minimum of two cars. So that's—that would mean you could only have maybe one or two visitors at any given moment in this new set of houses. So I really think we always excessively build with not thinking of people visiting or needing to have someone come to see them. Okay, and another issue I just kind of thought of when I was coming here, when they build this—I know the original Sycamore Walk, a lot of the paved areas were just plain cement block, which the majority of buildings are. Are these going to be asked to put in any of that green where the walkways are made of bricks where water can drain down in between them? Or will this be another area where more water will just be flushed into the street, Garden Grove Boulevard there, to run down into the Santa Ana River when it rains? And I was kind of under the assumption when I read it and saw the little map that Los Sanchez was not going to lose its accessory parking they got in about a year and a half ago, which I do find that kind of alarming again, because once again, we've put a building, a business, on a corner that has no street parking, and they were doing so well with their additional parking. And even at that, if you go there on Saturday night at 8 o'clock, you better be walking because you're not going to find a parking space. So—and their food is delicious, so they're always full during mealtime. So if this is going to be taking away the parking once again, then it seems like you're always screaming about taxable money, and we're losing business for this company because of houses. Now, I do know this was a project that was started 11 years ago because it was completed—the original houses were completed 11 years ago. So it is something that has been needed to be taken care of for quite a while, because that is quite an eyesore at the end of West there. It's just kind of like this vast wasteland. But just remember, parking is a real issue anywhere in this city, and I do think every time we have a project that's parked into the city by—brought in, we should work at all—or the majority of the walkways and driveways are made in such a green fashion that all the water will not flush into the ocean, because we're creating a nightmare for ourselves everywhere. But thank you very much. But I do think it will be an improvement to have something on that piece of property.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? If you haven't filled out a card when you're done speaking, would you please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carl Hoy with Travis Companies, 4430 East Mar-a-Loma Avenue, Suite F, Anaheim, 92807. I stand before you here on behalf of the owners, Victor and Ida Gomez of Los Sanchez, and also as the original project architect for the Los Sanchez Restaurant. As a result of the wording on your public notice for this item and in abundance of caution relative to that public notice, I've been asked to just read into the public record on this public hearing three or four comments relative to the matter before you. We are not—on behalf of, again, the owner, we are not in opposition to the item before you for this matter, the development agreement, and we are not in opposition of the action that will be considered before you. As a result of the relocation of the Los Sanchez Restaurant from Harvard to Garden Grove Boulevard, the placement of the restaurant has been placed adjacent to residential uses. In addition to that, the placement of the Los Sanchez Restaurant adjacent to the adjoining residential uses may have created incompatible uses. Third, that the city in the future, as a result of the placement of the residential commercial use next to the residential uses, may be subject to—in the future—to complaints from the new residents who may occupy this project relative to noise and parking. And lastly, the last comment to read into public record is that the parking improvements that are currently utilized by Los Sanchez are in the process of being removed, and as part of that, the property owners are fulfilling their requirements as part of the original license agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I have a question.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Oh, did you want to say something? My question is, did the relocation of Los Sanchez from Harvard Boulevard result in the loss of any parking spaces that they had?
We did a double check of that, and as best we could tell, it's approximately the same amount, so we don't believe that there was a loss of parking spaces.
I know there are people from Los Sanchez here. Did anybody disagree with that comment, that you did not lose any parking spaces?
Unless we have a public hearing for.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, but.
I just wanted to make sure we don't have a—
Go ahead, and go ahead and pursue it, then.
I don't know. Carl, do you know if—if there was a—if—as best as you could tell, based on the previous location and the new location—
The total number of parking stalls were compatible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other areas of concern? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, then.
I'd like to know when the projects—when the plan—the project's planned. Is it financed yet? I'd like to know what's going on in a time manner.
Kim, you want to address that?
We have a representative from Olson.
Good evening. Yes, our financing is in place, and we are ready to begin when the entitlements are complete. And this would be wrapping up the entitlements. I believe there's a second reading, 30 days for the ordinance to become effective, and our plans are in plan check. I think our grading plans are actually approved. Our building plans are in plan check with the building department, so we are definitely ready to go. We'll be removing the environmental equipment soon.
Answer my question.
Any other questions over? Okay, thank you very much. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Mr. Mayor, 9A is, again, it's labeled a public meeting, but we'll treat it as a public hearing regarding the proposed Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District, and Greg Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, tonight we have the second step in the formation of the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District, also known as TID. So tonight, we're having a public meeting to receive public testimony regarding the proposed TID. A little background, the Garden Grove Hotels have requested the city consider forming the TID to include a self-assessment on the hotels to fund collective tourism and marketing efforts through the Anaheim Orange County Visitors and Convention Borough, also known as the ECB. The proposed Garden Grove TID is located— The proposed Garden Grove TID is located along Harbor Boulevard from the northern city boundary, uh, to Garden Grove Boulevard. The TID is broken up into two divisions, Tier 1 and Tier 2. Tier 1 hotels are north of Lamson Avenue, and they have a proposed 2.5 per occupied room assessment. Tier 2 hotels are south of Lamson Avenue, have a half a percent, uh, per night room assessment. So annually, the revenues from the TID will be $2 million, $2 million annually, which of 80% is marketing, uh, for marketing through the VCB. The additional 20% will be for improvements along Harbor Boulevard, as well as other tourism promotions within the city of Garden Grove. So the next steps in the process are for a public hearing, which is scheduled for October 12th, which will be for the first reading of the ordinance to establish the TID, and also a resolution approving the advisory board report for 2010, 2011. The final step in the process will be the reading of the final TID ordinance, which is scheduled for October 26th. And it's proposed the assessments will start about December 1st, 2010. So at this time, it's recommended that the city council conduct a public meeting regarding establishing the tourist improvement district for Garden Grove, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I will open the public meeting. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Okay. Let me.
I can't, I can't speak to exactly what I want to say.
Okay, I give you.
Okay, suggestions, just.
Okay. Too late, no, I'm only kidding, go ahead.
Basically speaking, once we become involved in this community.
You know, that needs to go on the record. Why don't you get the speaker?
Yeah. The mic can pick her up from there, believe me.
You have no fear, you can pick me up from anywhere. Basically, what my question is, is that, uh, once we become involved in this, it will be Anaheim and Orange County and different things, all working together to promote tourism, right? That's the basic thought behind this, basically. Will our hotels become Garden Grove Hotels, or will they still be listed as Anaheim Hotels? I, as a taxpayer, paying money for some of the startup projects of these, because I do know the hotels now, if you look online for a Garden Grove Hotel, you, you won't find it, but you will say, you can find the hotel in Anaheim, but it will say in Garden Grove. But if you're looking up Garden Grove Hotels, none of them really show up, and I find that kind of, uh, we're, we're going to this effort to become international west. We should soon start to want to brand it with our name. Otherwise, we've been spinning our wheels for quite a few years, becoming the second best. If we want to get out there and be known, we want, have to say, we are in Garden Grove, we're a hotel, and we're proud to be in Garden Grove. That's kind of my question. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll answer that. Some of them are listed Anaheim slash Garden Grove Resort area. I, I have seen some of that. And, you know, we're, uh, this is something that we're trying to build and work a partnership with Anaheim, too, and these, these things have been discussed in our meetings with the managers of the hotels in Garden Grove and Anaheim, and we're working towards a better solution. But meanwhile, our hotels are filling up, and, um, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not as very vocal as I used to be, um, when hotels many years ago strictly said Anaheim. I am concerned about the tax dollars coming in. I'm also concerned about the reputation of Garden Grove, and that's why forming this relationship is going to improve the designation of the Anaheim slash Garden Grove area. So we'll get the benefit of the tourism trade, and we'll become more well-known. It's a matter of time that takes that.
So if we're playing in a assessment, we will, we will get our name pushed farther forward.
These are things that we want to work out to see which is the most beneficial for both cities. And, and of course, you know, let's face it, for the five peoples up here, or the four tonight up here, you know, we, we're more concerned with what Garden Grove gets. You know, we would, would rather see a little more Garden Grove and a little less Anaheim, but those are things that have to be worked out.
Yeah, thank you.
But thank you for your concern, Peggy. Okay, no one else speaking, so I will close the public meeting and entertain a motion.
Move the item. Action to be taken.
I'm sorry?
I was going to say, it's a.
No action.
No, uh, you know what? I want to see how many people would do it, never mind. Okay.
It was a test, huh?
We're done with that. So, uh, Mr. Broadwater?
Um, I'd like to speak, speak on something that was brought to our attention several years back, and that was a lady came in here and told us how terrible, how terrible the vacant lot at the corner of Brookhurst and, um, Stanford was. And, you know, she was absolutely right then, and we told her we'd do something about it, and we did nothing about it. And election time has come back again, and the signs are out there, and I'm not having anything against the signs or anything else, but nothing was done in two years about cleaning that property up. I'd like to have somebody take a look at what we could do to clean that property up, as well as the property at the corner of Euclid and Garden Grove Boulevard, the west, southwest corner. I mean, both of them are filthy, dirty, and, uh, I mean, you, you drive off the freeway, you come right up to the, to the civic center, and everything looks great except for that eyesore at the corner of Euclid and Garden Grove Boulevard. And I almost tried to add that we would make him plant grass there when he bought that property, and, uh, he called me on the phone and begged me not to do it, but he hasn't lived up to his either. He said he would keep it clean. Looks terrible. So, let's get, let's, you know, let's clean it up a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Jones.
Uh, just two things. For one, it was a pleasure to have Lee Butterfield in here tonight, getting honored. When I first started out on the planning commission, I served a number of years with her on the planning commission, and she was chair for most of that time, and I learned a heck of a lot from her. She knew how to run a very tight meeting and keep things in order and stay focused on the bigger picture of things, and, um, so she was, she was a wonderful mentor for me on the planning commission, and it's fun having her back here in the same room where we started out. And then, um, second of all, this, last weekend, I was at the Arab American Festival that was in town, and it's here in town every year, and it's a, it's a big event. And, uh, I got interviewed, um, on some TV station there that I have no idea where it's ever going to appear or not, but, um, and the question they asked is, you know, what, what can the city do to help kind of promote this event so that other people get to sort of come and see the culture? And it dawned on me that that might actually be worth sharing. Interesting thing about Garden Grove, um, large city, you know, 170, 175,000 population, very diverse ethnic mix in our population, and every year, we have an Arab American Festival. Uh, Vietnamese have a Tet Festival upcoming, actually, within a few weeks, on, I think, the weekend of about October 9th, is the Korean-American Festival, um, and would just encourage that, um, non-Arab's in the city should go check out the Arab American Festival, and non-Vietnamese should go check out the Vietnamese, the Tet Festival and whatnot. There's a lot to be learned from, um, other cultures, and it's a great gift that Garden Grove has, uh, that's unique, so.
Thank you. Mr. Doe.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I appreciate Mr. Depp coming in and taking the approach that he did, informing us and advising us of a problem, and, and together, we'll work on a solution. Too often, people come in and they have to, they feel like they need to take an adversarial approach, you know, uh, and, and I think that's can be counterproductive. So I encourage people viewing this at home to, to use that as an example of that even though we represent the city and the staff works, you know, uh, on projects around the city, doesn't mean we know of all the problems that may be out there. And so, uh, we can benefit from being more informed. So, so feel welcome to come to the council meetings and, uh, let us know of issues that are, you know, relevant to your local neighborhoods. We appreciate that, and together, we'll work to make the city better. And I want to thank Mayor Dalton for coming to my defense on some of the comments earlier. I, I don't feel the need to, um, to address every spurious allegation that, that come before me, no matter how often they are repeated, unless I feel like the source is somebody that people actually listen to and that I will, uh, have to address. Needless to say, I have run into Mr. Rod Powell around the neighborhood many times at the ATM, uh, three times at least in the last six months. Saw him drive by my house last night, or two nights ago, when I was talking to my neighbor, and I caught him stop in front of my h- house, and he drove off, you know, but of course, he, uh, not going to admit to any of those things. And you're right, uh, people aren't going to come up here and say the things he did, and, and if I feel the need to, I will bring the neighbors out, but I don't, I don't want to inconvenience them just because of some crackpot coming in here, week after week, doing this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now I've got some great news, Peggy, so listen up. The Orange County Register's 17th Annual People's Choice Awards were recently revealed, and the best playground in Orange County was awarded to our very own Atlantis Play Center. Readers of the Orange County Register voted it as the number one playground in Orange County, beating out Colonel Bill Barber Memorial Park and Irvine Regional Park. In addition, the Strawberry Festival was voted third-best parade community festival in Orange County behind Huntington Beach's 4th of July Festival and Orange International Street Fair. So we have a lot of things we should be proud of, and I guess every once in a while, we should mention them so people, people are more aware of them. As Mr. Jones said, the Arab American Festival, uh, actually, I haven't heard any complaints. Usually when we have a festival, it doesn't matter which one it is, people complain a little bit about the music or the noise or whatever, but, uh, there were more people there this year, I think, than last year, and, uh, there were more people of, of all nationalities, which is good. That's what you want. You want to be able to rub elbows with other people, other cultures, and learn from them. I mean, Garden Grove is a city of diversity and culture, and, and, you know, we promote that, and it's great for all of us. Another flash, Peggy, because I saw you there, the Burlington Coat Factory opened up a few days ago, and Peggy was down there checking it out. I don't know if she got me a Christmas present or not, but I know you were thinking about me, and that was something that, uh, you know, we're, we're making every effort we can, not only to keep the businesses we have, but to attract other businesses here. So we don't always give a report each week, but I can tell you that most of the people that you see sitting up here are working on one thing or another, in addition to their other duties, but trying to make Garden Grove a, a better place. And, you know, all of us up here live here, all of us, including Mr. Doe, I know, lives here, and it's, it's better for our city, so we're all working hard. And again, we don't always toot our own horn, so that doesn't mean things aren't happening. I'd like to, um, adjourn the meeting tonight in the memory of Dick Hayne, who passed away a few days ago. Dick was a longtime community leader in Garden Grove. Uh, he was a school teacher and principal in the Garden Grove School District, and then became a trustee of the school district. Uh, his wife was also a school teacher, and they were members of the Sister City Association. They were very instrumental in getting then the, uh, Garden Grove sympathy up and running, and were just involved in so many things to make Garden Grove a better place. Our prayers and, uh, our sympathy goes out to the family, and I will adjourn the meeting in Dick Hayne's memory. The next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 12th, 2010, at 5:30 in the council chambers, and I hope to see you all here again. Thank you.